Councilmember Tucker?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Aparano?
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Burnworth?
Here.
Mayor Dale?
Here.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Eugenio is absent.
Okay, uh, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the body of all who stands, one nation, united in the law, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, Mr. Marita, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and and council, we would ask that you, uh, add.
Item to.
Events that had occurred, uh, as consequence of that, there were various things that we think the city might be eligible for reimbursement in terms of the emergency response. And so we would ask that you add the item, uh, to the agenda under the, uh, I think either one of the either an emergency or the fact that there's a need for an action and that need for the action after the agenda was posted.
Okay, do you want to just put that on E seven, just make an E seven?
That would, that would be fine.
Okay.
The council would make a motion and.
Make a motion.
Second?
I have a motion a second, please vote.
Motion passes four zero for the addition of E seven.
That's everything on the adjustment.
In terms of. Get to the. Uh, there's. Under the claims and warrants section because of the council of people having received.
And that's, and that'll be it then.
Definitely when you get to the consent.
Okay.
Find the number.
Do we have any?
Consent.
Do we have any other adjustments?
No, there are no other.
Are we going to be removing item D three?
Yes, indeed. Uh, thank, thank you. Thank you for the prompt. Uh, yes, also on the consent agenda, uh, we would, uh, request that you remove item D three from the consent.
Hey. All right, thank you.
Wait, can we vote on the removal just to make it easy?
Which I.
Make a motion to remove.
Okay.
Second.
Have motion a second, please vote.
Motion passes four zero for the removal of item E three.
Okay, um, Ms. Turner, any action taken in close section?
Is the first item, there was an item that was brought to my attention after the posting of the agenda. So there was one discussion with property negotiator regarding Imperial Ag LLC. That was added, voted on and discussed, direction was given to the negotiator. The council also discussed conference legal counsel, two items under five, four, nine, five, six point nine D two. Direction was given to council on both items, no additional report. There was also one existing legal matter listed as item A two on the agenda, which was discussed and direction was given to council on that matter. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay. So let's, oh, let's, well, we gotta go down to, uh, the consent on those, so, okay. All right, um, C one matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand. Be acknowledged by the mayor and at that time state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a timeline on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Anybody like to speak at this time? Yes, sir, please come on.
Good evening, Honorable City Council, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Gonzalo Gerardo. Uh, a lot of people in Imperial County know me as Chalo. I am a retired police chief from the city of Colexco, did thirty one years over there. And I've been living with in the city of Imperial since two thousand and late two thousand and one. Um, I'm really happy with the city and I just wanted to come today and actually give my hats off to your. Uh, in Colexco, we call it public works department. I don't know what they call yours is public services or, uh, uh, Mr. Loper. Uh, the day after the, the storm, um, even though we did see a lot of water, um, receding, it happens everywhere. You know, our infrastructure here in Imperial County is not made for the water to flow as it's falling down. People don't understand, um, but I did see him the following day, um, that was I was making my rounds around my mother in law's house and some other areas where trees had fallen. That was, I was very happy to see them, your, your staff out there in this, in the city trucks, uh, with a trailer picking up a lot of, uh, debris off the streets. Um, so in my area where I live, it was great. I know they went around the other areas and like I said, we always thank the fire police because you know they're the heroes, but in this case, you know, uh, it was really good to see, uh, public works department out there doing it. It's just, I just came to say thank you very much. Kudos, man. I, I really appreciate that. It makes me say, and my wife, we're proud and happy that we lived in this great city. Um, being that I was born in Colexco, my wife was born in Brawley, uh, we, the halfway point is Imperial and that's. And I think that's why Imperial is even better because not only you have the people that were born and raised in Imperial, but you have the good people from the south, good people from the north coming in and meeting halfway. Um, so thank you very much. And that's all I had to say. And you know, bless you, God, bless you guys all. Keep on doing your work. I mean, I, I, I saw that stuff falling and I said, I hope they come out, you know, and you, and you did. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak at this time? Okay, yes. Oh, yes, sir. Please come forward.
My name is Brian here. I'm the managing, uh, member of Imperial Ag. And I would like to, uh, ask the council, uh, to consider a longer term lease on the property in Imperial. Um, towards that lease, the reason being is, is that the property that we're farming, uh, requires good stewardship. And to, to be able to do that requires a longer term lease to put improvements on the property, uh, in the future. We farm hay there, alfalfa hay. Uh, you have a lot of depreciable assets that need to be taken care of. And our short term leases, we're just not allowed in the current economy and climate to be able to do that. And so, uh, I humbly ask that you consider that and give direction to council to, uh, to, uh, uh, accept those, accept those terms. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, consent agenda. All items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council in one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at the time determined by the mayor. Okay, and we're gonna have to pull two numbers, um, or, um, Robert Aparano is one O six eight O one. And Katie Burnworth is, uh, one O six seven eight nine. So do I have a motion for Katie first?
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion a second, please vote.
Motion passes, three yeses, one abstain, and that abstain is by Ms. Burnworth.
Okay, and then motion for Robert.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion a second, please vote. Here, you can beat it with that thing. Tell it to hurry up.
All right.
Perfect.
Motion passes, three with one abstain, and then abstain is Mr. Aparano.
And Mi- Mr. Mayor, I believe there are, there are a couple, a couple of others aside from those. I, I, I would suggest a separate action with respect to one O five, six, six, eight JT towing.
Didn't see that one either, so, okay. We have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Yeah, motion a second, please vote.
Motion passes, three to one abstain, and the abstain is from Mr. Tucker.
And we need to make just one vote on the consent in itself, correct?
Correct. And, and I think there were a couple of other things, but, uh, councilperson Eugenio is not present tonight, so I think we're okay on those.
Okay.
So you can, uh, have a motion to approve the balance of the.
Approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Got a motion a second, please vote.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, let's move on to E, hold on a sec. Okay, um, E action items, E one, uh, subject deputy Anthony Redondo Memorial Park proposed park improvements.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. In August, staff applied for the CPRS education initiative grant. The city was awarded a fifty percent match towards procurement of the inclusive play structure. Staff is seeking city council's approval to purchase the playground, fitness equipment and shades before the price surge of materials happens in November. Staff is also seeking council's authorization to seek bids for construction and installation once the equipment is received. And I'll stand for any questions.
Questions, comments?
Really like the way this is going too.
And just on, uh, just a heads up, uh, it's fifty percent now, but if we do COD, which is we pay within ten days of delivery, we get, uh, eighty percent. So we'll have an eighty percent discount potentially on all the equipment.
Check.
Second.
Have motion a second, uh, discussion though before we. What was it that you were saying in November that would cause it to go up?
Oh, uh, playground manufacturing, uh, raw materials and things that are, that are used to make the playground structures. Uh, there's gonna be a fifteen, twenty percent surge in pricing, uh, mid-November. Uh, and that's all across the board, all manufacturers for playground structures.
Eventually you can only screw people so long. And I'm seeing this across the board on everything. Our residents need to know that this stuff's coming up. That's why I asked the question. Cause this is just getting ridiculous. I, uh, do a lot of business in Mexico right now. Mexico's not increasing things. It's only on this side. It seems like they just have a license to steal. So, okay, uh, please vote.
Motion passes four zero and that's on part one of item E one.
Need, uh, somebody to make a motion for.
Make a motion to seek bids.
I have, have motion a second, please vote.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, let's move on to two, discussion approved, deny acceptance of RFP for labor compliance services for clear well, filter, piping and GAC expansion project.
Mayor and council, we're bringing this back to you. Uh, we put it back out to, uh, to bid for an RFP for the labor compliance for this project. Uh, this is a project at the water plant that will bring some of the piping and the GACs. And it did come in within what we felt and like we got one bid back. It's from Labor Compliance Consultants of Southern California in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
Approved labor compliance consultants of Southern California hourly pricing of ninety dollar fees not to exceed thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
Motion a second, please vote. Wow, thirteen thousand, that's a lot better than all those ones were hundreds of thousands.
Much better than.
That's much better.
Motion passes four zero.
That we're gonna do.
Okay, E three?
We are skipping E three.
Oh, that's right. Uh, E four Imperial Public Library Code of Conduct Policy.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um, a- as you, as you may recall, the, the, uh, library does have a current code of conduct policy. What we've discovered is that, uh, uh, more detail might be helpful to staff, uh, and, and, uh, make them feel more comfortable in the context of the sort of, uh, visitors that, that the library is getting and, and, and what you have before you is a policy that was brought to the, uh, library board. And the library board has recommended this policy to you for, uh, adoption.
So I, I do have a question if I may ask. So let's say there is violations to this code. How and who will be enforcing that?
Depends on the nature of the violations. What, what we have advised and, and urged, uh, uh, employees at the library to do uh, is if, if there is ever a circumstance in which they feel, uh, uh, have a fear for their personal physical safety, that they should, uh, call the police. Uh, beyond that, if you, if you see, uh, aspects of the code having to do with dress and, and and things like that, use of the bathrooms, uh, uh, the, the director has been involved, uh, in, in for enforcing that aspect of the policy. And, and, and the director has also been suggested though, that if she at any point in time feels uncomfortable uh, in either in terms of, uh, the, the person she's, uh, he or she's dealing with, then, then also get, get the police involved. And, and we've, and the police have been very responsive there. The police is aware of, 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 uh, the proximity of, of folks to the library and, and, and so they've. My understanding is that police have been very responsive to, uh, situations at the library that have arisen.
Will this, will the conduct be shared with library staff so they understand?
Yes.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion a second, please vote.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, we'll go on to E five, discussion only laboratory widening project.
Um, Mr. Mayor, council, I'm gonna make a quick presentation on the status of the laboratory widening project. Uh, for those, um, via social media, my name is Sotomora. I'm the community development director. And I oversee, um, all aspects of the community development director, engineering, planning and building and safety. And the background on, on this, as some of you already know, back in twenty nineteen, the council gave direction to staff to um, start looking for some funding sources and whatnot. Um, look for, uh, for monies through STBG, ICTC, CMAC. Um, and we were able to get funding through LTM measure D SB one and, uh, the circulation, uh, fees. Um, the project location is on laboratory road, which, uh, runs from in a north-south direction from Ayton Boulevard to Threshold Road. Um, this project since twenty nineteen, um, this project, uh, we completed some draft improvements, uh, back in twenty twenty. Uh, we were working in collaboration with IIT and we were able to obtain the laboratory, um, the encroachment permit from them, um, barely this year. Um, some of the benefits for this project would be the transportation, safety and community. Um, the transportation aspect, it's the, uh, road reparations that will alleviate traffic congestion. The safety, uh, we will make sure that we have, uh, enough lighting, uh, in order to reduce traffic accidents. And the benefit for the community is the, uh, we're providing brand new sidewalks on the east side of the road. The, prior to the construction, um, we didn't have, uh, any street lights between Ayton Boulevard and, and Threshold Road. We have s- some of them, uh, one of the old, um, I did street lights, but we're gonna be replacing them with some, um, uh, LED nude lighting. Um, there was no storm rain between Ayton Boulevard and Threshold Road. There was no sidewalks and the asphalt was in desperate need of, uh, reconstruction. Uh, it is a very narrow road with heavy traffic. So the scope of work for, for this project is we're gonna be widening the road from two lanes to four lanes. Um, we're gonna be relocating some utilities. Uh, we're gonna be relocating, uh, a, uh, traffic signal. Uh, we're gonna be upgrading that traffic signal with hardware. Uh, we are installing a pedestrian count and signal heads. Uh, the accessibility, uh, pedestrian signal push buttons, uh, it's for reconstruction of asphalt, eighty eight, complying curb ramps and crosswalk striping. The, uh, contractor, it's rope engineering. Um, they contract awarded to the contractor losing the amount of two million fifty five thousand, five hundred ninety, fifty five thousand, five hundred ninety eight dollars and eighty cents, and it's coming out of the LTA measure D. Uh, SB one, which is known as a road maintenance repairs act and circulation funds. We also, uh, award up a contract to Southern California of labor compliance, uh, for those services, for labor compliance services. And, um, we started the project, uh, on August twenty ninth of this year. Um, there was, uh, we established the temporary traffic control and mobilization. Uh, equipment, uh, was brought into project site to ensure efficiency, um, set up the staging areas. And temporary traffic control was installed in Imperial and Al Central two weeks prior to the commencement of the project. And we did some asphalt grinding, as you can see, there's a short video of what has been done. The contractor used a milden asphalt equipment to grind and remove the existing asphalt pavement. We also removed the existing dating material, um, anticipate, it's anticipating the placement of the class two base. This prepares and levels the foundation for the future road. We also, um, it's are installing a brand twelve inch PVC water line. This watered line is at seventy percent completion as of today. And the water line will be connecting to the existing water line at the intersection of Ayton Boulevard and Laboratory Road. We also, um, are installing a storm drain system. The storm drain pipe is currently being installed. It's at seventy percent and the new straight, in a, the new storm drain will connect to the existing a storm drain system at the intersection of Ayton and Laboratory Road. And this is the team that has made all of this happen. And it is anticip- we are anticipating the, the construction be completed um, by November twenty seventh of this year. Um, some of the, um, some other items we're gonna be installing in the next couple of weeks. The installation of the curb and gutter, the installation of the class two base and the asphalt will be, uh, installed by November thirtieth. Have any questions?
I got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, in regards to that water line, you said it's gonna go from Ayton Road down to Threshold?
Correct.
And it's gonna dead end to Threshold or what are we?
No, we're gonna be connecting to, to existing water.
To the existing water line that goes to the, to the east?
Yes.
Okay.
So and then we'll be making the installation.
So what we doing a loop?
Correct.
Awesome.
Yes. Do not be losing any pressure there.
So that storm drain, you're saying it's going north on laboratory to Ayton?
North laboratory to Ayton. There's an existing storm drain system there.
We can't tap into the drain that's on the south?
Um, the, based on the elevations of the road, um, that was the most cost effective way.
And then, uh, one of my last questions, well, one of the other questions is given the, the weather events that we've had lately. Um, I know that we were shooting for November twenty seventh, I think. Yeah, we were still.
Earlier, we were shooting for earlier, um, but we, uh, the delays, um, it's been ten, uh, business days. We lost ten days. We lost two, almost two weeks.
Yeah.
Or you could say two weeks. Um, so yeah, we were hoping, but.
Last question. You know what's coming. Are we on track?
We are, uh, I would say we are on track. There of course gonna be a balancing change order on the asphalt grindings and on the installation of the asphalt. Uh, we, we usually calculate it right at, at, as it is, if it's perfect. But once you're doing the compaction and whatnot, there's always gonna be a balancing change order, but we're gonna be within the contingency so far.
Okay, so nothing's gonna exceed our twenty five percent contingency that we have.
No, we, we did the excavation. Well, seventy percent of the storm drain in the water line, uh, we found a couple, you know, minor little things, yes. Oh, yeah, that too. Um, a, a, a water line, some connections with the IED, we, some of them been abandoned, removed and whatnot, but we haven't found anything significant that will trigger a big change order and.
Yeah. Final question. I know that we're gonna put sidewalks, new sidewalks on the east side.
Correct.
Uh, west side has exist- existed sidewalks. Will there be a bike?
No, it's.
No bike lane?
No bike lane on this location.
Okay. Thank you very much for that update. I just, um, I drive by there kind of and I always wonder where we're at, especially this last one where we saw a lake.
Correct.
So, that it was something.
We've been very, very lucky in this project so far.
Good.
It's been good.
Thank you. I got no further. Thank you for the.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to E six, discussion only, North Point Development Project.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor and council, this is another, uh, a, a request that, uh, from councilperson Aparano for an u- update on the hotel. I spoke briefly with, uh, Mr. Nahar today, uh, to get, uh, some, uh, perspective from him. As, as you recall, it was reported, uh, initially that they were shooting for first quarter twenty twenty three to open. Uh, he's, he's basically saying it's looking more like September twenty twenty three. Uh, and given what we've heard already, I, I, I hesitate to repeat what he said, but, uh, basically what one of the reasons he indicated had to do with supply chain. Uh, and, and furniture, furniture and furnishings, uh, for the hotel. Uh, they have, they, they have the building permit, uh, was issued on the fourth of October. Uh, so, and I, I understand they're busy most on, on the interior at this juncture. Um, uh, but, uh, uh, the, uh, the silver lining and, uh, according to Paul, uh, uh, i- is that, uh, he thinks the delay is gonna operate in their favor in this way. He says what they see, uh, associated with hotel rates in Imperial County and vacancy rates in Imperial County. Uh, the, the delay associated. the delay associated with their opening, he thinks is gonna operate in their favor. So when they do open, uh, uh, it, 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 it will be, uh, they anticipate, uh, rates that are, that are, uh, higher than their pro forma had forecasted and, and a vacancy rate that is higher than their pro, pro forma had forecasted. So they're very optimistic and looking forward to, to all of that ter- in terms of, of the opening. Uh, they're, they're aggressively pursuing other tenants, uh, cause as you recall, the hotel occupies approximately four acres of twenty-plus acres. Uh, and I think we had previously reported that they have a, a deal with intercare uh, for, uh, senior focused, uh, health care. Uh, and, uh, and that's moving forward. They have a very aggressive schedule, uh, a- as part of their, uh, that arrangements. Um, so, uh, other, I, I think everything is still, uh, they're, they're working, working hard and looking forward to, uh, opening. Things got pushed back a bit, uh, but, uh, still on, on track as far as that goes.
Very much for that report. I appreciate that. I just, once again, it's another one that I drive by and it's near where I live. So just always wonder.
We've, we've all seen that for way too many years. And so, yeah, I think any activity is, uh, is, is a good thing out there.
Yep. Thank you very.
Uh, Miss, Mr. Mayor, I, I, uh, if, if I can, uh, if we can go back to item E three on, on the action, uh, that, that item is, is, uh, uh, requesting council approval. Uh, as you'll recall, over the last couple of years, there's been an effort, uh, to, uh, get rid of those things that we're not using on a day-to-day basis so we can uh, figure out what our storage needs are and, and, uh, and the like. And so E three is a request to dispose of, uh, surplus items here, here in the library and then in, in terms of books, uh, and other equi- equipment and materials. So that's the long and short of that. Uh.
We, we got that confused with D three. That's why we kinda pushed through it, I, I assume. So do we have a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Before we vote, I got a question. Dennis, are these books coming off the shelf? Or are these books that are in storage or are these books that are somewhere else or?
Yeah, I, I think it's a, I, my understanding is a combination. I, I, and I, and, and so I think the library is the recipient. I, when people clean out their garage and they find books, so the, when they people will come to work and they'll find boxes of books outside the front door. So people, uh, people think that, uh, that, that that's one way to get rid of their surplus books. Unfortunately, many times those books are either we already have or don't have a need for. And so tha- that's a portion of them. Um, and, and, uh, but, but there are books of, of various sorts of origin.
Um, and, and the reason I ask because if there were newer books, older books, I don't know. One of the things that says we have pictures, but we have no pictures to see this.
But you have before using pictures. If you go to the library, you'll see that there is an effort, uh, to, uh, uh, in essence, give away, uh, certain books and, uh, uh, frankly, there's not a lot of takers. So, uh, I think we've arrived at the point where, where we need to be more proactive in terms of disposal.
I'm motion stand.
Have a second? Okay, I have a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes for zero.
Now we'll move to E seven.
Yes, Mr. I, I have a. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, you're, you're being handed the, the proposed form of, of, uh, resolution to declare the, uh, emergency, uh, associated with the events of last Saturday and the we- the weather events of last Saturday.
Make a motion to approve, uh, resolution of the City of Imperial Council declaring a local emergency related to rain and windstorm on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Have a motion a second, please vote.
Motion passes for zero.
Going to, uh, adjourn this meeting, City Council, for the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, November second, twenty twenty-two at seven P M.